Okay, welcome everyone. I'm calling this meeting back to order. We did begin the meeting in executive session, so we don't need to start with calling the roll. Thanks for your patience with us this evening, and I hope you grab a slice of cake. So, I need a motion to approve item A2, the minutes of the four meetings listed.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
And on to awards and recognitions.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, we'll start with our students. Okay, tonight's first recognition is the Career in Technical Education Student of the Month, Senior Jordan Hall, from the Criminal Justice Program. In addition to being a standout student, Jordan is also an accomplished runner and is active in community service. He was captain of the cross-country team and placed second at the Lake Erie League Championships and seventh in the regional meet. An active volunteer, Jordan helped start the Criminal Justice Community Hygiene Project. He also volunteered at his church to clean the Garden of Prayer and volunteers to rake leaves for his neighbors. Jordan, we would like to recognize you for your outstanding efforts and your accomplishments as a student, an athlete, and a community volunteer. Please come forward, Jordan. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, we're gonna take a picture here, and it's Nancy, we have to, no, just stay right in the middle, in the middle, in the center. And we have Nancy Pepler to come, and I'll come forward to take a picture. Our second recognition tonight is the Career in Technical Education Program of the Month, Marketing Management. We have a marketing instructor, Ms. Sarah Parker, and students Tiara Voss and Haywood Alge with us tonight. Marketing management students learn the skills necessary to be successful in college and in workforce, including marketing, sales, advertising and promotion, visual merchandising, human relations, and employability skills. Senior marketing students not only attend class, but also work in a marketing-related position in a community. Seniors' workplaces include TJ Maxx, Hines', Marshals', I'm sorry, Heinens', Marshals', JCPenney, Finish Line, Nordstrom's Rack, and Journeys, and Auntie Anne's Pretzels in Beechwood Place. Seniors must work 280 hours throughout the school year and are evaluated on their job by Ms. Parker and the student's direct supervisor. On average, students earn $2,800 during the senior year. Marketing students are also members of the organization DECA, which gives students the opportunity to practice their leadership skills in a variety of civic, social, and fundraising activities. DECA also allows the students to complete and, to compete rather, in career-related events at the local, state, and national levels. This year, our DECA's chapter was chosen to participate in AT&amp;T's Aspire Mentoring Academy. Cleveland Heights University Heights DECA was one of only two chapters chosen for the program in Ohio. As part of this program, students will visit the AT&amp;T corporate offices in Brexville twice this year, twice a year. They will also be working alongside AT&amp;T employees in the classroom and in various community service activities. There are numerous opportunities for marketing management students upon graduation. Most students enroll into a four-year college and major in business or marketing-related fields. And as an added bonus, students who enrolled in the marketing management program also receive college credit from Cuyahoga County Community College. We're very proud to recognize our marketing management program and its contributions to our students' success. So would the teacher and the two students please come forward to be recognized? And let's give them, oh, they look nice in their blazers. Congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause. I would like to also thank to our new CTE director, Brad Callender, who made sure that we recognized our students in our current and technical program. He wanted to make sure that their programs were recognized and students were recognized for their accomplishments. So, thank you again, Mr. Callender. So, our last recognitions, I want to recognize two board members who are very sad today as tonight is their last meeting. And they have, they have a special place in my heart because they were among the two who chose me for this, for this position. And I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts and their support of me in this, in this job, and for their dedication to this community. They both live and love this community, and they have been gone over and above this year, last year and this year, and they're going on to some, some next chapters in their lives. And I know they're gonna continue to do some, some great things for this community and for their individual work as, as well. So, I want to publicly thank you. And we had to take their pictures down off the wall when we framed their photos, and we have a certificate that states, "Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board of Education extends its highest appreciation to Eric Kobel and Nancy Pepler, Board of Education member, for his and her excellent effort and dedication service to the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District. Signed, all our board members, and Scott and myself." So, thank you all. So, if you've come to the front, so you can be recognized, and, yes. One more.
Nancy, you may wanna stand up on the step.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Cal's so tall.
I know, I know.
And I'm going to take just a moment to recognize two people in the audience. We have our two newest elected members of the school board in the audience. They'll be sworn in in January, but I'd like to introduce them to those of you in the community who don't know them. So first, we have Beverly Wright. And Jim Posh. For those of you who don't know them, please take a moment to start to get to know them because they're both going to be fabulous additions to the school board. All right. Next, we have public address. We don't have any requested audience. We do have one person who has signed up to make statements from the audience, and Mr. Ari Klein, with the topic of money lost from the district.
Thank you. I'd like to present these.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Outgoing members, thank you for your service. Treasurer Gaynor and Superintendent Dixon. I come to you this evening as a representative of the Heights Coalition for Public Education, which now has over 700 endorsers on our website, chuh.net/coalition. The Coalition, as you know, because we sent you an email last week, has asked you to consider invoicing the state of Ohio for monies lost to students that we do not serve in our district. Just this year, for instance, we have lost over $5 million. We will be losing over $5 million just this fiscal year to students doing Peterson Scholarships, which is a voucher for special education students, over $1.2 million for Ed Choice vouchers, and over $3.4 million for charter school students. So, these are all students that we don't serve in our district, but the $5 million or over $5 million for just this year comes away from the state money that we have for educating the students that we do serve. I would like you to consider joining other districts like Parma, who was in the paper two weeks ago, maybe. Parma invoiced the, the state of Ohio for $43 million for monies that they were lost to their district over the last 15 years. I think if we went just five years, I think that the number would be well over $20 million in lost funds. I don't expect the state to actually write a check for this lost money, but I believe that if enough boards of education show their, their concern and their upset over lost monies, that maybe the state might consider funding things differently from their end. I think it would be different if it was students that we were serving, but a lot of these, these are students that we may never have served, and we don't serve now. So, I would hope that in your, in your, between now and your next meeting perhaps, you might consider the sample resolution that I, I sent to you that other places have used and consider adopting that as something, as a position that we can rally some troops around. Because I think that, I think the community would really need to know that we've lost a lot of money, and that if you'd end up going back to the voters for more money, they need to understand that there's some of this that's out of our control, and the state should be held accountable for, for the decisions that they make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have our first reading for our Heights High School new course proposal and course modifications for the 2016 and 17 school year, and I have Bob Swaggart here if you have any questions and give us some more information regarding these proposed new courses. Hi, Bob.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here to talk about our new course proposals for the 2016-2017 school year. I have provided you a summary of the courses, and I just want to present a little bit of that information back out to the audience and to the board. The proposals that you are looking at have been reviewed and vetted by the appropriate high school departments. High school administration and educational service team members have further reviewed the proposals to check for alignment with existing academic offerings, state regulations, student interests, and coherence with the CHUH strategic plan. In accordance with Cleveland Heights University Heights City's school district bylaws and policies, the following new course proposals are being brought before you for consideration and approval. There are three groups of new courses and one which we are re-establishing at the high school here. So, our first new course is a public speaking course. This semester-long elective will be focused on public speaking. It will cover various styles of public speaking, including instructional, persuasive, oral interpretation of literature and storytelling, as well as foundations of public speaking. And this is a semester-long offering. Creative writing is a course that we have offered in the past in our district. It actually was, I believe, before I was serving in my capacity, but we would like to re-establish that course with an emphasis on helping students develop varied opportunities for writing poetry, fiction, nonfiction, and short drama. We have an honors modern world history course, which is geared for ninth-grade students who will be pursuing AP US history in their sophomore year. This course takes students on a study of modern eras, and students can develop very important skills to the AP US history course like critical reading, critical writing, analyzing historical evidence and artifacts, hypothesizing, and evaluating historical The balance of our courses that you see before you are, in addition to the college credit plus courses that we are offering, last year, we began offering college credit plus English college comp at our high school. That's in addition to any college courses that students may take at Tri-C, Notre Dame, any of the local colleges. These are courses that we are offering on our campus, so students can take, participate in college credit plus courses without having to leave the high school environment. So, these are courses that we are going to try and offer to add to that complement, which would be college credit plus anatomy and physiology, college credit plus introduction to American studies, which is gonna be in partnership with Kenyon College and the Kenyon Academic Partnership, college credit plus African-American history, which is another CAP course or Kenyon Academic Partnership, and then college credit plus math, which will be in conjunction with our Tri-C partners. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to speak with you about any of these proposals, answer any questions that you might have, or just provide additional detail.
I got a couple questions. On the honors world history, modern world history?
Yes.
What is our definition of modern, from when to when? I remember when I was in high school, we always got to World War II, and then like the last day of school, you did 40 years before that, or after, I should say. So, what timeframe are we looking at?
So, we're gonna go from 1877 until we move up into current time. So, it's a...
Hopefully...
Yes. And actually, the modern world history course is outlined by the state, and so they give us the parameters. We're just going more in-depth with our critical thinking, reading and writing skills to make it an honors-level course in preparation for the AP course.
And then on the college credit, the American studies, why is it just the 50s and 60s? And then why are they alternating? Is that, is that Kenyon, or is that us?
That's a great question. So, any of the college credit plus courses, we are adopting the course syllabus from the college partner. So, they define the parameters, they give us the syllabus, they provide the training for our teachers, and our teachers are delivering their syllabus, and we're giving the college credit that goes along with it.
So, I should ask Kenyon why?
Yeah, exactly.
So, do the teachers get to be adjuncts?
Yes, so it's a great question. All of our college credit plus offerings that we're using here in our district, like our college credit plus college comp, which is an English course, and these that are provided here today, we're trying to use all of our teachers. The requirements from the state say you have to have a master's degree plus 18 hours of additional graduate-level work in order to have that adjunct status. Currently, we're a little short in the college credit plus math, but we do have some teachers that we're hoping to provide a grant opportunity for them to go get additional courses, so they can become our in-house adjunct professors.
Two questions of the, so college credit plus, maybe you could explain for everyone, who determines that that, that it's worth college credit? In other words, where is that college credit accepted?
That's great. So, just for the audience and maybe for the board, the college credit plus program is really geared at trying to provide a college experience and college credit without having the cost associated to it with families. So, this really is about having students take college-level courses. There's usually an entrance exam, or students have to pass whatever entrance requirements the university requires students to pass, whether they're a graduating senior or they're a sophomore in high school. They still have to be able to pass the compass exam, or they have to place at a certain level in order to receive math credit. But it really is to try and open up the, the college environment, college classes, and students can receive the dual credit for that, which means that they're getting high school credit and they're getting college credit at the same time. So, depending on our college partner, there are different requirements. So, if students are taking college credit plus courses at John Carroll, the students are held accountable to John Carroll's entrance requirements. If they're going to Tri-C, students would be responsible for taking the compass exam. And these CAP courses, which is the Kenyon Academic Partnership, Kenyon is saying that their requirements are a letter of recommendation and some standardized test scores, but they are a little bit more flexible. They really want students to be able to have some of that experience. And one of the benefits of why we're even working with Kenyon is students who take a CAP course while they're here in the district, if they take the CAP course their junior year, they attend a summer program at Kenyon, they become eligible for a full scholarship to Kenyon. So, there's a lot of benefits to our students. And one of the things that I did not know about Kenyon and their professors and their program has helped me understand this, is there's a lot of Kenyon graduates and alumni in Cleveland Heights. And so, they're really interested in trying to even foster a mentoring program with some of our students as they might be willing or interested to move to the Kenyon campus. So, I feel like that kind of support is really helpful for our students, in addition to the opportunities for full scholarships to attend Kenyon University, Ken College.
So, the only other question, if you can do this sort of in a nutshell, sort of a broad question, but I know I talked about that staff and students have proposed new courses, but could you sort of give us the, what is it, 50,000-foot view of how do we determine what courses to offer in a given year? You don't even have to highlight these, but we have a curriculum. How did we decide these were the gaps we needed? How did we decide this is the direction? Is there, is there a quick answer to that question?
No, definitely.
10 words left.
Thorough research and statistical analysis.
You win.
I think that we're really trying to focus on gaining some feedback from our students. We've heard, based on the students who have moved outside of our high school environment, that they're looking for college credit plus offerings. That's why that is the major part that we're trying to develop. Obviously, that program is still in its infancy stages in, in the state of Ohio, so we felt that there was an opportunity to grow that at this point in time. We got parent feedback over the last couple of years around the modern world history course, saying that there was nothing for students to take as a ninth grader, that it really was challenging for students to become AP-ready. Our first AP course is AP US History, which is a very challenging, rigorous reading and writing course. So, we felt that this was a great opportunity for us to really think about how to provide some of those resources to students. And then the other courses that you see brought before you, the public speaking and the creative writing, actually, those came out of the, the high school staff. Those were proposed by high school English teachers, that they took that proposal to their department, they submitted some paperwork, and then through several vetting processes, we narrowed this down. We said, okay, this is reasonable at this point in time, this is doable, we have the staff, this might be budget-neutral. So, we have a, a pretty intensive process to try and figure out, is this the right time for these courses? Is there a student, a student piece where they're looking for this course? And then we also look at making sure that it fits within our staffing parameters.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we have approval for the following field trips. Heights High School Vocal Music Barbershopers Field Trip to Reno, Nevada, scheduled for January 26th to the 30th of 2016. Then we have the Heights High Sinfonic Winds Symphony and Jazz Ensembles Field Trip to Nashville, Tennessee, scheduled for February 26th to the 29th of 2016. And the Heights High Acapella Choir and Singers International Youth Chorus Festival Field Trip to Chicago, Illinois, April 7th through the 10th of 2016. Like approval of those following field trips?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Kids are already excited about tours, they call them.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I believe I can take items E1 through 5 together, our personnel items. E1 through 5 together, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Item 4, we have newspaper advisor. Does this mean we are going to have a student newspaper again?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
An actual paper, or I guess, what's the, is there anyone here can speak to what the plan is?
Scott, Scott Wartman, if you can come up, please.
I can speak to that. I met with Courtney White, who's an English teacher in the high school, and she's very passionate about starting up, restarting the, the student newspaper. We're starting off, I think she's using Shaker Heights as a model, the Shakerite, and kind of the site they use, I think, starting off, it's largely gonna live online and maybe look to do a print version after that, but to get it off the ground, it'll probably be mostly online. I think she's got about 20 or 30 students that are interested in, in doing, doing the student newspaper, but it's gonna be a project for her to kind of get off the ground.
Talk to the folks at Future Heights, about going, going into the future, or going forward, I should say. And also, I think it may be beneficial as well to see if they have, because I know in the past, they have offered to assist and help, so definitely reach out to them to see if they're, if they're interested and able to help out.
Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes. And we are on to business services. For reference, gentlemen on the board, we do need to take items F1 through 3 separately, and we can take 4, 5, and 6 together. So, while Mr. Chagallis is preparing, if I could have a motion to approve item F1, the change orders for the Wiley-enabling projects.
So moved.
Second.
So, these are a, good evening. These are a wide variety of added features to ensure that the Wiley building was fully functional and could support the educational program. I have with us this evening Scott Bindel and Fred Rogers from the construction management team, and Steve Zanoni from PMC available, if you have detailed questions about any of these items.
I think I'll harass you with my detailed questions at a later date, so.
Okay.
You've been forewarned.
Just, just a quick question. When we deal with the change orders, we can take a number of them at the same time, or...
May, yes. This format is appropriate.
The project, as long as they're within the project.
For the project, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And as a general rule, I, I was looking at these numbers, and I couldn't quite track the numbers, I guess. Like, you know, this is change order 3, 15, 16, and 17. Why, why the gap?
Because they're consecutive to Gil Bane's contract. And Steve, if you could help me, I think that's why. And they don't necessarily align exactly with the projects, if I remember, if that's, that's correct.
No, I don't know if you're asking, why do we have number 3 when we have 15, 16, and 17, and where are the others?
That's what I'm asking.
Is that what you're asking? The reason is, is it seems that we, we checked, we were under the impression you did approve number 3. It was discussed, but it wasn't approved. This is almost the, this was back in January, February last year, when we looked up, we always recheck before we're gonna pay out a change order. Has it been approved by the board? And we discovered it was not. And that's why it is out of sequence. And the others, the 15, 16, and 17 are in sequence, and those are the last.
Some of these are OS, other ones are RFI. What do those abbreviations stand for?
RFI means request for information, is requests to the architects, and oftentimes it produces a change order. And what was the other?
OS.
OS.
OS is our internal tracking number, so each change, we track add an OS number to it.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah. That's the construction, I'll just, so... I'll just so make sure we get it, it's Construction Manager's Tracking Number.
All right, Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
And I need a motion, please, to approve item F2, the change orders for Cleveland Heights High School.
So moved.
Second.
Question on OS 0060. The webcam wasn't in the budget original?
No, it was not. Was not.
I mean, it's very useful. I'm watching you guys four or five times a day, which is why I have some other questions, but.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
And I need a motion to approve item F3, the recommendation to approve the high school reconstruction project construction documents.
So moved. Second.
What documents are we approving? I just have a sheet of papers.
We're going to pull that off. We're requesting not to, for that, take action on that, due to, they're finishing up a few other items, and we want to make sure the set of documents are complete.
What do I do now that I've had a motion and a second?
Table it?
Mr. Gainer.
Yeah, we can table it.
Do I need a motion to table it, I believe? Could I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Item F3.
Second.
And I...
And we'll take a roll on that.
Take a roll on that motion. Okay, Mr. Gainer.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
So just a quick question. When this comes up again, we're going to have to take that off the table, right? So we'll have to track that.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, I can take items F4 through 6 together. Have a motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have questions, but not pertaining to 4, 5, and 6. We got the buildings guy, we got some questions for him.
Okay, wait, what's on the... Okay.
Question about 4, 5, and 6. Thank you for the donations.
Thank you.
As always, yes.
Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
I, the question, no, a couple of questions were, because I know Scott put some stuff on the website. It said that the demo, our interior demo at the high school is, we're in the home stretch. That's when I was, is that accurate, or I was in the couch?
Why don't you...
Yeah. Fred.
When I did the tour a couple of weeks ago, you guys had a lot of demo to do, so I was just curious.
Good evening. Our demolition is coming around the home stretch. I would surmise that we're probably in the upper 70s, 80% complete. We have some more items that we are dealing with now in terms of some abatement, and those items are going to be dealt with as far as hazardous removal with the selective demolition.
So I guess, because when I toured the building, it seemed like just the fourth floor was completely finished, so in the last couple of weeks, you guys have knocked out the other floors, 1, 2, 3, or...
There's some other items within 1, 2, and 3, but part of them are dealing with the abatement portion.
Okay. Oh, and Scott, another photo, there was some arches that they uncovered behind some plaster. I was trying to figure out where in the building that was, and if we intended to possibly save those.
I'll give Scott to give you the detail.
The arches in question were above the drop ceiling and below the original 1926 ceiling, but those are in the walls, partitions that are scheduled for demolition as part of expanding that corridor.
Which floor is that? Third floor?
I want to say third.
Third floor, in the middle of the hallway?
In the middle of the hallway, between the two north-south classroom wings, yes.
That's probably the whole library. And then from where we, because we have the one cam, you can see what's going on on the side of the building, where are we as far as getting in a position to start being able to put some steel up? When can we, when do we expect to see steel rising?
Steel, we've been dealing with getting past some obstacles with foundations. We're scheduled for steel just after the turn of the year.
Okay. So come January, people should start seeing stuff going up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my only question for Steve was, I heard whispers that we may have used some leftover floor tile from Wiley in this room. Is that going to come to fruition, or... I heard a rumor.
I have not heard that rumor.
Okay. I'll have to tell my person.
We'll have to run that down.
Okay, I'll have to check down that rumor. Okay. That was it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Together. Okay. We're moving on to finance. Could I have a motion to approve items G1 through 6?
So moved.
Second.
One that doesn't get tabled.
Right. For the finance section tonight, most of these items are related to closing out the fiscal year-end, or these are audit requirements. We have a monthly financial report. We are bringing back to you the permanent appropriations. You'll remember, traditionally, we do the temporaries at 25%. This year, we did the full appropriations, but the language wasn't sufficient to suit the auditors, so we're just bringing that same number back to you again, retroactive to September.
Wait, can you say that again?
The, when we brought, typically, we do 25% of the previous year as the temporaries. This year, we did the full year's appropriations, but the language at the time still indicated that it was temporary.
Okay.
And so what we've done is cured that by saying that those same numbers are the permanent, but back to that date.
Okay.
So that's the reason that that reads that way. And then the tax advance, so you annually authorize the county to pay us all the taxes that we are entitled to have. We do have a couple of purchase orders that were after the fact that are over the threshold of $3,000 that the board sets, so those are required to be approved by you. And we're cleaning up a couple of funds and stale data checks in terms of the audit, so...
Just a procedural question. We can approve multiple resolutions on one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
additions? Okay, Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Well, on to my board president's report. I guess this being my last board meeting, I just want to say thank you to everybody in the administration, on the board, in the community for the support, even the, even some of the bickering and the battling back and forth at times, that's why we're here, and that's what makes us as a district and as a community stronger, and I have very, very much appreciated it. I... Eight years is a long time to be on a board of ed. I know that some people have been on longer. I'm not going to name names. And I even talked to somebody earlier today to say that I was at Ohio School Boards Association Conference a couple of years ago, where we saw people getting awards for being on the board for 40 years. Well, that's not in this community. This community expects a lot, and you should, and it's been invigorating and exhausting all at the same time. I think what I'll take away as the best part of being on the board is that I have given, even though I've taken a lot away from my kids, I've given something to my kids about a desire to participate and be part of making things better. So I thank you all for giving me that opportunity. So, that was my board president's report. Yeah.
So you're welcome.
Thank you.
Let's do it again in four years. That took years. Wow.
You're funny. You're hilarious. I'm going to miss you all. All right, do we have any unfinished business?
I guess I'm going to jump in on unfinished business, because I do want to say, it's sort of a, not a rebuttal, but a back to what you just said, and I thought about saying it earlier, but I'd like to say it now. Those of you who've been around as long as some of us older people, remember that when Nancy and Eric got on the board, there was some, let's go with turmoil in the district, some challenges at least. There always are, and I think those of you who've been around know that. I can tell you, as a board member at the time, I had no idea how things would turn out. I just wasn't sure. You never know what's going to happen with new board members, and people come on for very strong reasons. And I can tell you that I can't imagine serving with two more thoughtful and committed people. The compassion that you show the community, the compassion you show the staff, and most of all, the compassion you show the students of our district is exemplary. And I can tell you that it wasn't a very high bar I started at, but you've made me a better board member, just serving with you. I also want to thank you both for the humor that you bring, because sometimes you need to laugh, and you both do a real nice job of it. But I'm going to miss you both quite a bit, so thank you very much both.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Was that new business?
I had no idea.
Unfinished. Okay, any new business?
It was unfinished business.
I said unfinished.
It was unfinished business.
Yeah. Okay, any new business? Any board committee reports?
The calendar committee has met, and we had our second meeting. It is to be determined whether that was our final meeting for coming up with the 16, 17, and 17, 18 calendars. We're looking at various changes in the calendars, and have been doing a lot of research on neighboring communities in terms of when they're starting their year, and the fact that so many of them are starting earlier and earlier, and whether this is actually beneficial to our students to be starting earlier, or whether we're just kind of joining in an early arms race to get students in in August. And so there's been a lot of discussion about that, the pros and cons of starting earlier. And it looks like there will be some changes going forward, but the formal calendar hopefully will be presented to the board in early next year for 17, 18, and then, if possible, also for 18, 19, so that we don't have to, you know, that we can, so parents and teachers can plan ahead on when breaks are.
So if we don't like something you did, we have no recourse, is what you're saying?
You have no recourse whatsoever. It is all on me, and I'm going.
We have your dress hair, don't we?
It's too late.
I'll do one, because you've got yours. Reaching Heights had their annual meeting, and the only thing I want to highlight from that was, and I guess he's gone, he was here for a while, but Don Frederick was giving the award for the friend of education of the year, so that was very nice, very nice of him, so beyond that, I think.
Okay, I got a bunch of stuff. Alumni Foundation's Cocktail Party was in November at the Wine Spot. I don't think we had an update on that. Worked out real well. People had a real good time. And also, for those at home who are streaming this, God knows why, the Heights Gear Shop, if you still need your last-minute Festivus gifts, if you ordered this week and it's in stock, you'll get it in time. Facilities Accountability Committee, they didn't meet because it's going to be this Thursday, so they don't have, I have no report from that. I have two things that aren't committee-related, but first one was, the Heights Observer, Greg Donnelly did an excellent article, I thought, about sort of discussing the issue of when people talk about Cleveland Heights University being high tax, and that was very excellent, taking a very broad, wide subject and boiling it down to saying that there's perception versus reality.